June 20th, 2016, meeting to order. Mr. Clayton, if you would lead us in prayer and Mr. Kendrick, if you would pledge allegiance for us.
Let's bow our head. Heavenly Father, please be with us as we go about the meeting this morning. Be with all of those that are here that have business before us. Be with our young men and women and all of our law enforcement as they go about protecting us to allow us to have meetings such as this. In our holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the agenda, I have requested an additional closed session for the purpose of possible land acquisition. And item number eight needs to be deleted. I think Mr. Young's gonna bring it back in the next meeting or in July. Is there anything else we need to rearrange as far as the agenda?
Move for approval.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? All right. We got anybody who wants to talk this morning?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay. John Hill, you already on the agenda.
Morning. How's everybody doing this morning?
Good morning.
Hey, I just wanted to take a moment just to recognize our little leaguers that are gonna be representing Person County this coming weekend. And we're gonna call out their names tomorrow on planning Person radio show. And if you guys get out there, you know, get a chance to make the trip down to Wilson, North Carolina this weekend, the seven and eight-year-olds, let's see, we've got the seven and eight, nine and 10 boys will be playing. And if you've ever been to the Wilson complex, that's the same complex that we, you know, we are trying to mirror and use their same concept of operation. So Person County kids are gonna be representing us well. As a matter of fact, I was out at the park yesterday and they were practicing and our guys looked really good. So then also, next weekend, or July the first weekend, the 11 and 12-year-old boys will be representing us in Wilson. And coming up also in All-Stars is the girls are gonna be representing us in Wilmington. And so that'll be in the next, you know, next couple of weeks. So if you get out there and see some little leaguers, support them and give them a shout out, tell everybody about it. It's a big season this year, everybody have a good time. And I think it's a, I think they feel like they're playing in Yankee Stadium. It gives them a heads up, you know, it gives them a leg up because they can play on something nice and then go and compete in All-Stars on something nice. So we're proud of them.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Everybody had a chance to look at the consent agenda? Anybody wanna pull anything out of there and talk about it? If not, do I have a motion to accept it as presented?
Certainly.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? All right. Ms. York, if you'll get us started on the senior center?
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. I have Kristin Hess here of HH Architecture who wants to provide an update to the board on the progress of the design development for the senior center. So she's got some results of the geotech exploration that had been done for the site, has updated drawings and costs, as well as some floor plans for the board to look at. And she's also gonna recap the discussion that she had with the city council. I think that was the last time that she was in front of us. We made contact with them for a couple of items, so she was gonna report back on that as well. So Kristin, if you don't mind taking it from here, thank you for being here this morning.
Sure. Good morning, everyone. How are you?
Good morning.
Good, I'm glad to be here. Well, we had a, we've had a couple new developments since the last time I was here with you. One, we had a public meeting, and I think in large, by and large, most people are pretty happy with it. There were some concerns about the size of the rooms and wanting to have some movable walls. And of course, the park always comes up, but I thought it was pretty good overall. Nothing, no major changes to the design at all. I mean, I think they just don't have very much now, so they're gonna be really happy with the new center. If I could have the clicker. Oh, that's not it. Oh. Heidi, thank you, appreciate that so much. Prepare to.
Well, did she use it?
We sent a PowerPoint a while ago, like last week? Maybe not? Not loaded?
I'm not sure that we have that loaded.
Okay, we'll just talk. I can pass around, I have paper copy, I don't, I don't have.
They have a copy in the packet.
Oh, you have a copy in your packet? Okay. Which page is first in your packet?
The layout.
The layout of the site plan? Okay, and the, and the agenda of, thank you. So in your, I'll just, I'll go through the, the design development update first, which is the Word document, okay? So the first thing is, is we provided some drawings. We turned in design development drawings, which is a big set to Ray, and that's being distributed to folks for their review, both with the city and the county. But let's talk about the geotech first. So this is probably the biggest new development with regards to the project, and that is, probably it doesn't come as much as, as a surprise to you, is that this soil, the normal soils, the virgin soils on the site are fine, but a lot of bad soils have been added to this site. Just like you know that the parking lot is not in great shape out there, the soil under this building and on this site are not adequate. And so we looked at two options. One, just remove all that soil, just take it out and haul it off, excavate it and haul it off and dump it, or do what they call aggregate piers, which is we're gonna go in and we're gonna drill holes down into the site, fill it with rock, and that's gonna allow more stability across the site, and then we can proceed with standard footings. And that was about half as much as hauling, hauling all the dirt off. But the soils and the structural work required to do all that foundation have brought the cost up at least $500,000. So I think before I presented you with a 3.3 million dollar budget, now if you include all the alternates, we're at 3.8, 3,820,000. So, and we can go through that detail if you would like. But it's just an unfortunate situation where you have some bad soils that have been added there. Are there any questions about that?
Would it be worth our while to move it somewhere else then?
Well, it's a good question. Do you have other places where you could put it, that we could look at those sites and see, do a test boring here or there?
Yeah.
As long as you don't have to redesign the building, you could build it someplace else. Probably would be cheaper.
This thing keeps, keeps growing.
I know. I know it. And I've looked at ways to cut the building, and the building's so efficient and so tight, there's really not a lot to cut unless we cut square footage, 'cause it's just a really simple building. We did pull some alternates out on the cost, like the canopy, the covered canopy and several things like that, but I mean, it's a standard brick building, it's brick veneer, steel structure, it's not that tall, it's not, there's no fancy gold-plated anything. I mean, it's a really straightforward structure. We're just really trying to put as much as we can into the square footage of the building. So if you had any alternative sites, I'd be happy to evaluate them for you, just to see. We could get a geotech boring and look, but that's really what's creating your cost, is your.
What?
Well, the distance. What was the feasibility of just renovating the existing building?
Um, well, I think that.
That's the last figure we saw on that, was 2.9, something like that.
Um, I'd have to go back, let me go back and look at that, but as I recall, we were gonna have to rip up all the structure and redo it.
That's right, we ran into a mold problem.
And we ran into a mold problem. That's exactly right. So there's some major remediation there. So I think between the deflection of the beams and the mold, there was some real concern about seniors being in there and whether you could really ever get rid of it all.
Well, my feeling is I think we need to reconsider, 'cause we're getting way over budget on this thing. I think we can provide the same thing, you just don't necessarily have to put it there if it's gonna be a costly site. My feeling. We started at, what, 2.8?
Mm-hmm.
So we're a million dollars over budget?
And ain't broke ground yet. And haven't broke ground yet.
Ain't broke ground yet.
I understand that it is frustrating, and I don't like being the one that came and told you one number and then it goes up, and then came and told you another number it goes up, but this geotech, in order to get the proper boring locations, we ended up wanting to get some of the building designed so that we had a footprint, that we knew where we were putting it. 'Cause at one point, you know, we didn't know if we were putting it at one end or the other.
Speak a little bit on the cities, the grasp of the city's concerns, the likes, dislike.
Sure. City had no problem with the project as a whole. I thought that, thought that the project was attractive and didn't have any concerns about the building or anything like that. They did have very big concerns about the wall. They did not want me to touch the wall, they did not want you to replace the wall, they want the wall to stay just like it is, but they would like for you to be to make the wall a little bit prettier. So they want some aesthetic repointing of the brick and the mortar. So we've been asked to sort of dress up the wall at cost to the county. I didn't, didn't get the sense that they would share in that cost, and maybe a plaque.
I don't get that sense.
And that there would be a plaque, maybe, that would talk about the history of the wall and that type of thing. You won't have to, you won't have to dress up the backside, because we're gonna cover the backside with a sister wall that's gonna be for, you know, we've got to be careful with that wall. If they wanna retain it, we've gotta be careful not to bash into it or excavate too quickly and the wall fall in or something. So we're gonna be building and being really careful on the other side of the wall. And then once it's all done, then we can have a mason come in and tuck point the wall and dress up the stone. I mean, the wall's been deteriorating for a while from skateboarders and weather and things like that. They did not seem to have a concern about those parking spaces. There's a part of the site where we've got to raise up the parking just a little bit in terms of height, because we wanna avoid having steps where the seniors are gonna be walking in and out to the Meals on Wheels door for the kitchen and so forth. And so we asked them if we could have, you know, a block of spaces, I can't remember, eight or 10 spaces where we would, the project would pay for the cost to raise it up, and soils are bad there anyway, so they said, sure, you can do that, we'd be fixing their parking lot. And then they said, but if you do, we want you to, we want the county to say that they'll maintain it for the long haul, those, that little bank of spaces. Which I guess was their way of protecting that somebody doesn't do a bad job and leave them, but I can't imagine it being worse than it is now. Certainly we'd be overseeing the construction to be sure it's done right. So there was that. And then the last one was, we wanted to have permission for the covered canopy, which right now is an alternate bid anyway, it's not even a sure deal that you would pay for it, you know, it's something we bid separately on bid day, just so you have price control. But they wanted to be assured of how that canopy touches down in the parking lot and what it does to through traffic and parking on the other side of the parking lot. And I didn't have a good drawing at the time to show that, so I've asked my civil engineers to go back and redraw more of the site, 'cause they've just been focusing on our site. So they're gonna do a drawing that extends further into the parking lot, and then once we have that, we will go back to the city and try to get them to firmly say, yes, you can do it. I don't think there's really any pushback, they just wanna be sure they're not agreeing to something that creates a problem. One was ready to vote for it right away, and then everybody else was, well, let's just get a drawing, so. So those were, I think, the three issues, the wall, the parking, and the canopy.
I think in light of the new information and the amount that we've moved over budget from what the original estimate was, I'd like to make a motion that we table moving forward at this moment and look at what our different options are. I think we'd be doing our taxpayers and our county a disservice with moving forward on it and not at least discussing what the additional options may be. As we all know, that the numbers we're getting are just estimates, and we could get into it and we'd be more than a million dollars over budget. As the chairman said earlier, we started at 2.8, now we're up to 3.8, and we haven't broke ground yet, so we don't know what the future's gonna hold. So I'd like to make a motion that we table moving forward and discuss our options before we agree to spending the additional money on the soil mediation.
May I suggest or ask that you add that we put together a team, so to speak, and we can start discussing this, so it's just not tabled and sitting on a shelf somewhere?
Yeah.
Be willing to serve on it. I think our chairman should, the manager, may nail.
I think we need to set us a timeframe, because we've already set the expectation that we're gonna move forward, and I don't want the people to think that we're not. So I would say that we get together and I'll, I'll amend my, our proposal to say that we, we put a group of people together with Heidi's direction on moving forward, and we set a minimum of three months to come back with a decision. How's that? Or, excuse me, a maximum of three months. Maximum of three months. You got that?
All right, now, does everybody understand why we're doing this? All right. We can't justify spending a million dollars just to keep it on one specific site. We can do a lot, you could be able to have a lot more building if you wanna move it a little ways and.
That's true.
So, anybody got any more discussion on this? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, we'll go work looking.
And I'll be happy to look at alternate sites with you or, once you find some sites, see to show you how they test fit on the site with the building that you've already got, so. Sounds good, thank you. Let me know. Thank you.
All righty. Item number two, Mr. John Hill. Person County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council funding.
You should have this in your packet, it's, it's the annual allocation from the state to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Each year, the state gives a certain amount of money to each county to go to youth service programs to help the at-risk youth in the counties and cities. Nothing has changed allocation-wise from the state in the last three years. The allocation this year, again, is $123,213. And of course, I've sent a breakdown on the agenda abstract of what the distribution between the services was for the last three years. And the county match is $23,543. And the, the, the allocation from the state, of course, I just said that, $123,213.
Is that in the budget?
So it's actually, you know, it's actually the same as it was last year.
All righty.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Any more discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right. Amy, if you'll come tell us how much money we got to spend next year?
Can I start us off?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, we have the actual budget ordinance here in your packet for fiscal year 16, 17. Let me clarify, it's not actually in your packet, we had a separate budget file, so I was hoping that everyone had had the chance to access that. And what you'll find in that separate folder for the budget is, one is a, what we call a budget at a glance, it's a one-page summary sheet of all of your funds, both revenues and expenditures. The next is a two-page document that summarizes all of the adjustments that were made from my recommended budget to your adopted budget and the amounts of each of those. And then the final piece that's included is the actual budget ordinance, which you are required by law to adopt by July 1. And you're also required to conduct a public hearing, which you satisfied that requirement as well. So the total amount budgeted for next year is $59,497,684, and that is your total budget, not just general fund, which we tend to focus on. What questions can either Amy or I answer for you, and any additional information that we can provide before we ask for a vote on the budget?
Nothing really changed from what we settled on the other day.
Correct. No, no other adjustments from the direction that you all gave us at the last work session. Some changes in the ordinance that you, that would be new from last year would include the new vehicle replacement fund that you created, that is now mentioned in there, but I can't think of any other major changes.
No, let me clarify, the $59,497,684 is the general fund.
It is the general fund, thank you.
And the total, the total budget is $64,989,821.
Yep, I'm looking right at the, right at the one-page summary, and it shows that that's the general fund.
All right, everybody satisfied with the budget? Anybody wanna make a motion to approve?
So move.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
You didn't give us a chance to make our speeches.
All right. Sybil, if you would.
Thank you.
Educate us on the tower exemptions.
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners. I am here to ask for an exemption for the State Highway Patrol from our planning and zoning fee, $5,000, that we usually collect for construction of a cell tower in the county. However, as you know, the State Highway Patrol is building the Mount Tersa Tower, and they will allow us to hang our equipment on it for free, and they have taken over the cost of that tower, so I felt that this was a reasonable request to come before you to ask for. You, you obviously know they've already built two towers for us, however, when they built those two towers, the state had exempted them from our ordinance, and we had also, in our old cell tower ordinance, included an exemption for them. But since then, we have repealed our cell tower ordinance, and the state has gotten rid of that requirement. So that's why I'm here today asking for that exemption.
Move to approve the fee exemption, Mr. Chairman?
All right. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. I wanna ask a question about the fee.
Sure.
We, we got rid of the cell tower ordinance, but we retained the fee.
That's correct.
The exemption for the state to pay it.
I know that.
He's saying is we ain't got an ordinance.
We got an ordinance, but we kept the fee. We don't have an ordinance, but we're charging a fee.
I thought the ordinance that we got rid of was the falls zone, not the whole, whole ordinance.
We took pieces of that ordinance, mainly just the setback requirements, and we put it into our planning ordinance.
The reason I'm questioning, does it look so big?
It is large.
Huh?
It is very large, it's $5,000 per tower. But that's in our, that's in our fee schedule.
What do we do with that $5,000?
It goes into the planning department's revenues.
What do we do for that $5,000? I misspoke there.
Um, you know, the planning department reviews it and makes sure that it's in compliance with our setback requirements.
You know that, you know that before, you know that before some of them on this board, before some of them on this board were born, I was fussing about the cell tower ordinance. They don't remember it, unless they were learning in kindergarten, but I've had an issue with it, because to me, it felt, it always felt like that we were holding back progress, and everybody now doesn't even think about it, it's got a cellphone, some kind of technology. I bet it's not a person in this room that don't have something. But they're communicating somewhere, probably as I speak, and what I speak, but it looks like to me that over the whole period of time, and I thought we were reducing this back, but over the whole period of time, it looks to me like it, you know, we ought to be promoting anything we can do with some of this technology, and you know, here we are, you're fussing about broadband and other things, and then we got a cell tower fee that looks to me very high. Maybe I'm missing something. Am I missing the boat? Somebody know something I don't know?
What would they pay in Durham County?
I'm not sure. I'd have to.
Well, in Durham County, you gotta put a pine tree on it, so it'll look pretty. So, you know.
I, I agree that we should have a fee, because we have construction firms within Person County that are paying fees for plan review and things of that nature.
I don't know, problem with a fee, I just thought it looked terribly high.
Make it more in line with what?
I thought it looked high, but maybe it's not, maybe it's that much work involved in it, I'm just questioning that, and I'm not.
We've approved two here lately, they didn't have a problem paying it, did they?
Not that I've heard. But I'm not sure what other counties are charging, you'll have to research that.
When you go to the Langham store and call the farmer, you can't talk on your phone.
You can't talk on the phone. I don't wanna do nothing to stop them from getting a cell tower down in that southern end, southwet east end of the county, 'cause it's just like, you can't get reception down there. Anyway, I just was questioning that, I don't wanna do nothing that'll keep them from trying to look at us to put something in here. And I'm sure these towels are gonna help that reception in that area, I don't have any doubt about it, but if somebody would please kinda see if that looks like that's a reasonable fee.
I'll be happy to do that.
I agree, Mr. Kendrick, I don't think it ought to be zero, but that just looked high to me.
All right, we got a motion. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay. All right. Designate NACO voting delegate. Are you and y'all two the only ones going?
Nominate Ray.
All right. Got a motion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We needed to include it in that alternate. I didn't think of that.
Well, we make you the alternate.
So move.
All in favor of that motion? Brenda, if you'll go over this list of committees, we'll see who wouldn't get to help us run this county.
Yes, sir. Then I'd like to present to you the interested citizen applications for board nomination for reappointment as deemed appropriate for the following boards and committees. Your wish to go through them by committee, each committee.
Yeah, let's go through them one at a time, it won't take long.
All right. If I may, I'll begin the non-competitive boards first, is that okay?
Certainly.
The Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee have one application for reappointment, Ms. Cornelia J.
Motion to approve.
Why don't we, the non-competitive, let's just do those in one lump.
Okay.
And we'll go through the others.
Would you like me to present them all?
Yeah.
For the Board of Adjustment, we have Ms. Felicia Swan requesting reappointment. For the Board of Health, we have Dr. Jeffrey Noblet and Dr. Stephen Saunders, both requesting reappointment. Also, from the Environmental Issues Advisory Committee, we have Jason Torian requesting reappointment. For the Home Health and Hospice Advisory Committee, we have Ms. Janine Wall requesting reappointment. For the JCPC, we have Kelly Fode, as well as Margaret Ratcher, both requesting reappointment. For the JCPC, we have Kelly Fode, as well as Margaret Ratcher, both requesting reappointment to represent the capacities for United Way and Citizen Report, respectively. For the CAR-TAR Regional Council Government Board, we have one interested citizen, Mr. Kenneth Perry. Has agreed, we do have other positions, another position for appointment, as well as alternates, but we do have one individual, Mr. Kenneth Perry. I will skip down to the Person Casual Wake Authority. We have Mr. Lindsey Tommy Waxstaff Jr. requesting reappointment. For the Planning Board, we have Mr. Derek Smith requesting a new appointment. He has previously served under this capacity, as well as Mr. Barry Walker requesting reappointment. For the Recreation Advisory Board, we have Mr. Donald Wong and Mr. Arnold Ashley, both requesting reappointment. For the Voluntary Ag District, all reappointments for Mr. Kenny Driften, representing Allensville, Mr. Bree Switfield, representing Olive Hill, and Mr. Arch Chipstone, representing the Roxton Townships. And for the Workforce Development Board, we have all reappointments, Sneaky Ward, Derek Sims, Eva McDougall, representing businesses, as well as one higher education, Dr. Walker Bartlett. All of those are considered non-competitive bids that have applications that equal the amount that was available or less.
Have a motion to accept those names?
Motion to accept.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
There is one additional non-competitive board that is deemed, and that is the Library Advisory Board. We have one physician available, but we have three applicants, Ms. Anne Gibson, Ernest Avery, and June Gentry, all requesting appointment. This would be their first time serving in this capacity, with the desire of the board for that one.
Make motion to appoint Annie Gibson.
Are any of the people here to speak?
No.
Okay. All right, we got a motion for Annie Gibson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Love her, former librarian at the hospital.
All right.
All right, the next board I'd like for your consideration is the ABC Board. We have one physician available, three applicants. Mr. Mike Laws is requesting reappointment. The other two would be new to the committee, Mr. Garland Graves Jr. and Mr. Norman Skip Carter.
Mike Laws.
Do we need to set up informal?
It's up to the board if you'd like to, if you'd use to add to and those appointments.
For the competitive, so I think we, we should, maybe our.
Okay, that would include the ABC Board.
Board trustees.
The PCC, Board Trustees, as well as Social Services.
I was going to ask you, what's the, what do we make, what do we consider competitive, not competitive? You got three people for one spot on the library. Why wouldn't that have been considered competitive?
We have a list of boards of meetings that the board had deemed competitive, and those.
Is that back when we used to give them a little money to serve on them, or because of that?
No, not, not linked to compensation, no. It was during the time when we had, they were very popular, where we oftentimes got more applications than we had seats available.
We need to do the library. I hate to do everybody else not doing.
Well, Ray, it was the, the main, you know, we, sometimes, we're not saying boards are more important than others, but, you know, like the PCC board, some boards pay a lot more, like the, like the, like the Lake, what are they, ABC, Lake Authority gets paid.
Oh, yeah, they're their own thing.
Yeah, they're their own. So, so we just want to know who we are appointing on the board, because sometimes we ran into problems after the fact, not knowing who we appointed.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board then? Ask these people to come talk to us, or?
I would ask the clerk to schedule interviews at our next evening meeting.
Which will be the first meeting in August. So we'd like to do a six P.M.
How many, how many positions?
So that means the people who are going off these boards will continue to serve till August, and we will let them know that, or?
Yeah, that's the way our policy is actually set up. This would include seven individuals.
Okay.
That will be invited to attend. So may I set it up for the first meeting in August at six P.M.?
I'd probably say six, six-thirty, I think that'd be fine for.
How many people we got to talk to?
Seven.
That's just a.
Usually about five minutes per person.
Well, you want six?
Start at six.
Six.
Okay.
Last time we did that, we were late starting a regular meeting.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All righty, that takes care of what we got to do today for that. All right, number eight was deleted. Mr. Young, if you'll talk to us about nine-one-one CAD.
I'll just knock them all out.
And while you're up there, call for a public hearing, come in Person County. Well, we'll do one at a time. Go ahead.
Okay. Currently, our nine-one-one system is about, since about two thousand and eight, seven, and is due for replacement because of this technology. Technology is, obviously, as mentioned before, has itself, we're much more efficient, much more better, with meeting our residents and our needs for our emergency. And so we are, the staff, Mr. Ren, with the nine-one-one staff, has, over the last six, eight months, been reviewing companies and vendors, and has chosen one that they best, that they feel is the best fit for the nine-one-one operations here in Person County. And he has also approached the nine-one-one board for funding, which has been approved just a few weeks ago. With that, he has also found a Missouri contract that we would like to request the board to consider piggybacking off of it, to get the best value, cost savings for our county, and also to move forward with that on a timely matter. We have to meet a one-year adjust, a one-year time period to meet on that piggyback, which is up in the twenty-third of July. And then, according to Mr. Akar, we have to do a public announcement saying that we are requesting to do a piggyback, which will go out this week. And then I will reapproach y'all for a decision whether to accept our proposal for the vendor. Mr. Akar, do you want to add anything to the procedure of the piggyback?
Do I need to explain very briefly the piggyback procedure? I will say that, as Mr. Young said, we must, if we attacked ourselves to someone else's contract in this state or in others, another state, that contract must be within a year. And as Mr. Young said, it was July twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, meet such criteria. And the sucket is that the other state have at least as stringent procurement rules as North Carolina does. I checked with the Missouri Association of Counties Executive Director and their General Counsel, and Johnston County, Missouri, that we piggyback on, in fact, complies with the state laws, which are much, much more restrictive. That is, they have to go through bid procedures at a much lower level than ours, so they're more stringent than we are. Therefore, we qualify under our state law to piggyback.
And my request here is to allow us to do a public notice, not to decide whether we purchase or not, but a public notice saying that we are looking at Sun Guard vendor, and to allow anybody else to come in and make comments to us, or provide us with equal or better equipment at a lower price. I will come back to you in July for the recommendation. This is just to put an advertisement and a public notice.
Move for approval to allow the advertisement.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty. Is that same, was that both, did we take care of both items here?
No, sir, not all of them.
Okay. You're up for number ten now.
Okay. Our current ambulance service is no longer providing service to Person County, and since that, we have sent out a, well, we actually received two applications from other ambulance services, one from Wake County and one from Pittsavanna County, well, actually, City of Dampel, they housed in City of Dampel, Pittsavanna County, Virginia. These two ambulance companies have put in applications for us, and reading the county ordinance to make some adjustments, some housekeeping, I'm coming for you today to readjust, revise, revision the current ambulance ordinance to allow one or more ambulance services to apply and be given a franchise within Person County. This is not saying that we are not giving the franchise tonight, today, but we are asking you to amend the current ordinance to allow us to offer that service. Currently, we just one. We'd like to expand that to have competition within this service, and this will allow that. The other things would be some housekeeping items, as one is to adjust the dates of the public notice that we have to send out. And, and that's what's just to amend the current ordinance. I will come back to you in July with the applications, recommendations for the applications for the franchise.
And a public hearing to be held in July as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, we can't just do it today, can we?
We cannot.
All right, we need a motion to have a public hearing in the next meeting.
Have you heard of any entrance of local residents trying to start up anything?
I have, no one has approached me. We actually had a third ambulance company from Johnson County, had verbally told me two times, but then I've called and repeatedly told them to get the application, and they never did respond back. But locally, I haven't heard anything.
I did meet with a couple of local folks who were trying to do a startup, and that's been, that was prior to Doug's arrival, so that's been, you know, maybe five, six months.
I never won about that time.
Yeah, but I have not received anything back.
I talked to one lately. They didn't approach. Now, as far as the equipment requirements and whatnot, that's set by the state?
As far as the equipment for the ambulance, they would have to get a state license permit from the state of North Carolina, as well as their employees would have to be licensed by the state of North Carolina. You will see in the franchise proposal that I will bring next month, we will extend that, broaden that a little bit for on training lines.
Are these two interested, because they're reading our ordinance and saying, well, we could be that sole provider in Person County, so it's worth going to Person County? Do they know if we, we possibly would allow two to be in the county, so then they may not be used solely?
They are both aware that there are two applicants, and I've shared with them even this past week, to tell them the process that we, which we would create, that they will, could be two here.
Now, we going to change the ordinance, just allow two, or as many as we want?
Or more.
Okay.
Two or more.
All right, so it'd be open door policy then.
I think that's a good idea, because we, with the one vendor that we had previously, and according to the old existing ordinance, we were left here with no vendor. So I think we'd be in a lot better shape if we offered it to more than one, and get it set up so that.
I just want to make sure we don't want to lose two applicants, once they figure out we were going to allow two, you know, if they thought they were going to be doing them once, and therefore it was financially profitable for them to come into more rural county.
All right. We got, need a motion to.
Motion to set a public notice to discuss.
Sure.
Authorize public hearing.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty, we'll get the ball rolling.
Thank you.
All right, as far as the chairman's.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
One question for Doug. With the, we were in the chief's meeting not too long ago, and there were some concerns, and I know it's not our tower anymore, it's the city's tower, there were some concerns about out in the Marais area and stuff, and that it could be just as simple fixed as a antenna or something like that. Did we look any further into that, to see if it was something that simple?
We looked, well, in relation to that meeting, we did have some complaints about the frequency, which we had vendor, our maintenance guy, come and check it and tweak the antenna to make it better. To extend it out to Mount Theresa area or the Marais area, you wouldn't get any more than what you're getting today.
Okay. Do you want to add a new antenna?
Right.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. As far as chairman's report, I don't have anything to report, I just that I would like for the manager to get us started on, discussion on the senior center, what we're going to do there, as quick as possible. Manager, you got any report?
I just wanted to mention the economic development course that I had emailed out to you all. If you are interested in attending that, it's being held at Vance Granville Community College on the twenty-eighth of June. Please let us know so we could get you registered. That's all.
All right. Ray, Jimmy, anything?
I was going to mention that Tracy's probably going to talk about this, but I was going to mention the little meeting we had in Raleigh with the.
I'd rather you talk about it. You know more about Stormwater thing than I do.
I was going to say to you too, to mention that the state Board of Directors meeting, talking to the secretary there too, in Asheville.
Yeah, I talked, Secretary of Commerce was at the Association of Commissioners meeting, and I did try to promote Person County with him, and carried a little note from Stewart up there to him to promote all of our assets up here, for any projects. And they are, they are fixing to make some type of tool. I think they fixing to go overseas, aren't they, Mr. Newell?
Yep. He's trying to put it down.
Every time, I feel like at any commissioner on this board, anytime you get a chance to see any of these people with any of these departments, you know, promote Person County, so they'll say, oh, yeah, well, Commissioner Kendrick, or Commissioner Newell, or Commissioner whatever, which one of us it is, has said something to me about it. You want them to have that on their mind, and I think that much as we can keep it on their mind, the better off we are.
And the good thing was, he was aware of some of the stuff we were doing up here.
He was very aware, and he told me that he was, he said, I, I got you, I got you on my radar. I thought that was a good thing. So he seems to be familiar.
Yeah, I think with us moving forward with the EDC, at the last meeting before, really, to go ahead and do some more additional testing and fact-finding on the site that we're trying to develop, shows that we are, we are dedicated to trying to make something happen, and I think that reinforces his sales pitch.
Also, Dr. Pat Mitchell, who Stewart happened to know before she got appointed, is considered the local, the rural government liaison with them. She was actually heading up a lot of that, and the new secretary took, and I can't pronounce his name, took that position.
I'm terrible at that.
I think you're right, but Dr. Mitchell's familiar with us, and she's been up here as well, and met the different ones, so did want to point that out. Also, the last meeting, you mentioned that, I think Tracy contacted somebody with the governor's office and set up a meeting with the Department of Environment, is what I still call them, that's not the official name for them, but the secretary and assistant secretary and the whole crowd, whatever, went to Tracy.
Yeah, the whole group, they.
Talked with us about Stormwater and Falls Lake, and they're sort of separate issues from a legal standpoint. The Stormwater issue is what we're dealing with every time we try to write a permit up here, and we asked for a one acre size instead of a half acre, undisturbed area, when you're developing a lot out here, which will make a lot of difference in how we have to treat the lots when they're writing the permits. They've got that on their radar, and, of course, nobody knows what the legislature's going to do with the rules, and they said if the legislature didn't make a lot of changes with the rules, that they had it on their board agenda to go to the Environmental Management Commission, I think in September, wasn't it, Tracy? They said early this fall, and they used in September deadlines, which, if you're not familiar with, when you're writing, getting a permit done over here, if you're disturbing more than a half acre, which it can include the driveway, if it's existing, they give some kind of exemption for it. But when you start dealing with just a half acre, you get into trouble if it's an individual developing a lot very far off of the road. So the acre would make a tremendous difference in how we have to treat Stormwater and the cost to the person getting the permit. They understood that, I think. Then they got into the model being used to protect the Falls Lake, and that's a different ballgame. That's the one where the Upper Neuse River Basin Association is involved with trying to get them to reconsider their standards for that, based on the model that they're using, was based on two thousand and six data, and we're trying to get them a bunch of new data, to get them to change that model, because it all, it's got timelines on it, and these may change, the legislature may change some of them. Jordan Lake, they've held back the rules, and Falls Lake, they've not done that, but I think probably because you're getting more water out of Falls Lake for water supply is one of the reasons they hadn't done that. Co-engineers knew the lake was going to be. Core engineers knew the lake was gonna be polluted when they built it, so, you know, we're dealing with something that we were told we were gonna, somebody was gonna deal with, it wasn't them, they were gonna put out the requirements. But sampling is being done, but the Upper Neuse River Basin Group had to get up and going, and it's like a four-year project, and we're in the second year of doing the sampling, and they are online if anybody wants to look at those sample results. And so far, I would say they've been favorable to the upper end of the lake. That part of the problem with the lake is the shallow depth of the lake above 85, and that causes algae to grow, and that causes problems in the lake, because it takes oxygen to dissolve. What the algae produce when, when these plants die. So, anyway, it's quite complicated, but they made, made it clear that the department under the EPA's heavy hand was not gonna do but so much. I think that's what we understood. So, I've gotten basically the same deal on this Falls Lake thing ever since whoever's been in power over there. So it's not a Democrat-Republican thing that I can see, it's a environmental water quality thing, and they're gonna do what they can do to meet the rules, but I think they're willing now. At one time, they wouldn't talk to us about looking at anything else, and I think now with the data, and we did get special legislation several years ago to require the department to look at the data that's being collected by the Upper Neuse Group, which includes Wake and Durham County. So, if you look at stormwater fees in the City of Durham and in Raleigh, and in the City of Raleigh, and they did step up to the plate and put more money into the testing and into what we're doing with it up in there. So, when you look at the fact that we've got some bigger players that are actually trying to help out with some of the requirements on the lake, I think it helps us in the long run. We're not just, at first, it was like they were expecting Granville County and Person County to bear the burden of fixing the water problem in the lake, and finally, they realized that, you know, Durham and Orange, City of Hillsboro, all, they've got wastewater treatment plants going in there, too, contributed to it. So, once everybody got on the same page of trying to do something to see if the water quality is really that bad. Also, at our last Upper Neuse meeting, they relaxed some of the samples that we were doing monthly. We went to quarterly, but it allowed us to do another type of sampling to check the sediment in the bottom of the Falls Lake. Now, these are things that the state should be doing, they're not. We're picking up their slack after the recession, and they cut their budget and didn't do what they needed to do with the sampling, so the Upper Neuse River Group is having to pick that slack up. But the sediment in Falls Lake is not as bad as they predicted it would be after 20 years. So, you know, it looks like, with, with clean-up farming up here, with sod planting and other things, I don't think the erosion is near as bad as it was 20 years ago. So, I suspect, and of course, in those counties, they still have a lot of agriculture too, but, so... And with the requirements that they made with some of these commercial subdivisions where they were, when they were digging up, now they got these little different mechanisms for catching silt as it goes into the lake, which they've had for quite a while. So I don't think the lake is being polluted to the degree that it was when it was first built, and I don't think it's in as bad a shape as some groups try to tell you it is, and it's not pristine, but it'll never be, they knew that when they built it.
All right, now, did you get any kind of indication that if Person County was super clean and Granville County was super dirty, that Person would get any better treatment?
Not at this point. I think that would have to, I think that's something would have to be brought up if, if that was really true.
Well, I think at the moment, the tests are gonna prove that we got the cleanest water, but we also got the most restrictions.
Well...
For our county, anyway.
Yeah, they start...
Most county, most of the other places are dealing with subdivisions. We're dealing with 10-acre farms that we want to put a, a house on, so...
They started out with the meeting talking about how with our sampling being lower, they thought that we, their measures that they had put in place were actually doing good. Then when Jimmy explained to them that the original models that they set up were incorrect, that we were being penalized for sediment and nutrients that we never put in there, then they understood. So, I think they're wait, gotta wait and see kind of, um...
Well, they're gonna wait till they get test results, so they gotta have something they can hang there.
That's right, and, and to piggyback on Jimmy, since we're on wastewater, I want to say that their main thing was, their hands are tied, is basically what they told us when they left. They thought that they would help us increase half lot size, acre lot size to acre lot size, that they would help push that through. But the main thing that our citizens of Person County, our builders and our developers need to do is contact Senator Woodard and Senator Yarborough and talk to them, because they told us on multiple occasions while we were sitting there that the place to, to affect it the most would be over at the Legislature Building. So, please contact the legislature and let them know that Person County is, is doing the right thing and that the restrictions are an undue burden for Person County residents.
Mr. Chairman, I meant, asked staff to talk to anybody that's engaged in dealing with what we're trying to do with the internet on these towers and stuff. This current legislation, they could just put us on, put brakes on us very quickly with that.
Yes, and so I did speak with them, and they have held back on that, so it has not been introduced. That's my understanding at this point, so...
And I just want to be aware of it.
Yes, and if it, if it does get introduced, then we have edits that we would like to suggest. So we're prepared and ready for that.
So there is legislation, so that's...
That's, I made the phone call.
Yes, but it's changed since then, and so now we have to count for edits.
Yep, so we're, they're doing their job.
All right, Kyle, you got anything?
Just want to say that I had a great time attending SP Gentry's 100th anniversary of being in business, and want to congratulate the Gentry family for a lifelong dedication of prosperity, and looking forward to future opportunities with them. And if you ever get a chance, I'm sure they would still like for you to just drop in, buy some Hoop Cheese and get a Coke, and, and sit down and talk with them for a little bit. Also, had an opportunity to speak and attend an event honoring Donald and Becky Wilson last Saturday night. It was a heck of a turnout. They raised $29,000 to, to create a scholarship fund in Donald and Becky's name. And Donald was also honored with the Order to Longleaf Pine by Representative Yarborough. So it was truly a wonderful night, and they continue to be in our prayers.
All right, Tracy?
Jimmy covered mine.
All righty, that concludes all the conversation. We need a motion to go in a closed session for the purpose to discuss personnel with the following individuals. County Manager Heidi York and Brenda Reeves, clutched to the board.
Motion to go in a closed session.
Can I do both of them at the same time?
You should have a separate motion.
All right. Also need a motion to enter in a closed session for the purpose to consider acquisition of leased real property. Heidi York, Brenda Reeves, Ron Akok, Stuart Gilbert, Ellis Johnson, I have a motion for that also.
Somebody?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are in closed session.
Which one, which one again?
Which one will be first?
Thanks for the good.